I would like to call to order the August 7th, 2023 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Welcome, everyone. Wanted to especially welcome our newest board member, Mr. Tim Fur. It's good to have you onboard. You already got your official name plaque there, and you look like you've been sitting there for years.
I think I have.
Yeah, well.
I've got my candy, sir.
Okay, excellent. Well, we're glad to have you. Welcome. Okay, first up is approval of the work session agenda. You all have a copy of that before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda, including the changes on page three?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say no. That motion passes. And we move now to discussion items. First up is from the county manager, Arena and Event Center Provider Discussion, and I think Rodney's going to lead us on that one.
So, last month, you heard from our incumbent provider, ASM Global, and also from a potential alternative provider, the sports facilities company. While it is still fresh, we wanted to put this back on the agenda to see if you had any direction or discussion. As a reminder, we have until the summer of 2025 with our current provider, so there is no rush for a decision. But if you have any direction to provide staff, we'll take it at this time.
Commissioners, any comments based on the discussion we had last week?
Just one real quick.
Or last month, excuse me?
Yeah, just one quick question. Rodney, did we look at what effect our revenue, if we did in-house, for doing management from in-house?
We have not analyzed the potential costs or revenues of doing it in-house, but we certainly could if that was the board's pleasure.
Yeah, I would like to see us look at that, see, because we've been, the way that I'm looking at it, is we've been out there for 20 years now, and a good majority of the vendors that attend the Events Center are ones that's been coming for years and years and years. So therefore, the marketing should not be as heavy as it was to get to where we are now. And I believe, in my own thoughts, that if we did it in-house, we could probably maintain those same vendors and maybe even pick up more vendors. But I don't, I don't know a lot about marketing, you know, on a large scale like that, but I think we ought to at least look at, see if we couldn't maybe do that from in-house.
Okay, other questions or comments?
I'm a fan of the second one. We've seen the report, that place hemorrhages money. It's been hemorrhaging money, so I'm in favor of trying something new.
So, when would we, you say that the contract comes up 2025, is that January 25?
I believe it's June 30th of 2025.
And so, when would we, I mean, of course, we, if we want to make a decision to go in a different direction, what kind of timeline are we looking at?
Yeah, we would have to work with both sides to work on a transition plan. And bring that back to the board.
Talking like six months, a year?
I think at the present, it would go with the effective date of July 1st, 2025, so...
But I mean, when would we need to make a decision to get everything ironed out?
I think we would want to do it with at least six months.
Six months in advance.
Yeah.
And then, I know we went over this, but I want to make sure that I'm correct. How much is the taxpayer subsidizing that facility? You know, as Commissioner Warman said, and I think we've all known that, you know, it's, you know, it's not profitable for the county, so at what, or it's not even breaking even. So, how much is it costing the taxpayers each year?
So, it's been a range. So, obviously, it's been down in the $400,000, $500,000 range, and it's also been up above a million dollars. And so, it's fluctuated depending on, obviously, COVID had a significant impact. What's often not reflected in those numbers is we also have capital investments that we have to make out there. And so, those aren't baked into that loss calculation, because they're handled through the CIP.
So, that's in addition to probably over a million dollars.
Correct.
Okay. And what, do you know off the top of your head what years that was, that it went down to 400?
Do I see Kenny over there? Do you mind if I have?
Yeah, sure. I would just like to know.
And I don't know, putting you on the spot, but can you speak to the...
Just generally speaking, what years that?
Commissioner, I'm going a little from memory, I may be a year off. The year before COVID started, I guess that would have been our fiscal year 19, I think we were right around the $450,000 loss range during COVID. It definitely went up to that million range that Rodney was talking about. The last two years were, most recent year, we just finished up, was 460. Last year, the year before that, was in that same range. I can't, that number escapes me just a little bit, it was kind of in that same range.
Okay. Because I thought I had seen a number, I thought we had discussed one time, maybe it was like 1.5 million that we were subsidizing. So, I just want to make sure I have the numbers correct.
Yeah, I don't know that it's gotten up to that level. We may have budgeted that amount, but if they bring in additional revenues during the fiscal year, we don't actually spend that amount.
Okay, right. And so, this is, yeah, and so, this is just operations, not including capital. What capital projects do we have proposed for out there?
Kyle, do you have the, or Michael?
So, we have two different types of projects that we do out there. Operating projects, which probably about $400,000 a year, things like insulation rewrapping, different work on painting, ceiling tiles, those type of things. And then, your CIPs, which is standalone. I think we have three that jump out at me. One is paving and underground stormwater of the overflow lots up front, which that's not hitting this fiscal year. We have a CIP out there for redoing some of the utilities for the RV lot, and that actually hit last year, and we're still working through the engineering on that. And then, there is the, I would call it Patty's Stage Area at the Midway. I'm not really sure what, it's just still in early design right now. But it's near, if you know the aesthetic pond, it's not a stormwater pond, but the aesthetic pond that's up there off the one side of the midway. It was, it was creating a stage that would go there.
Okay. All right, and so, now this, you say roughly $400,000 a year for just general maintenance operating?
That's correct.
And that is not part of the revenue side, or where we're having to put money in, just for...
It's on the expense side.
Okay. But that's, so that $400,000 is included in?
The general maintenance pieces, yes.
Okay.
Not the additional projects.
Right, okay. Okay. That answers my questions. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I wasn't here for the presentation, but I have looked at them, and I'm in agreement with the other guys. We've got to come up with another solution or another plan. You can't continue to let that be a money pit. I wouldn't think you'd want to, so I think we need to look at alternative ways to see if we can get in a little better situation.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'll reiterate some of the things that I said when we talked about it last time. I think it's a little bit unfair to say that it's hemorrhaging money, or it's a money pit. I think that would be somewhat comparable to saying Frankless Park is a money pit, because it is not designed to create revenue. Fortunately for us, the arena has come much closer, but as I mentioned before, you know, I think that we need to remember the other activities that go on out there, and what it means to the community. And I mentioned the ECA breakfast that they have out there. National Night Out, which occurred out there last week, which was a great event, but it's not a revenue-producing event. I was at another event out there this past Saturday, which was for the International Center for Community Development. It formerly was the Hispanic Learning Center. They had a culinary competition out there of international chefs. And, I mean, there are a lot of things that go on out there that benefit our community and organizations in our community that are not profit-oriented, just, just like a lot of the activities that go on. That will go on at the, a lot of our facilities, the New Barn at Frankless Park, and the picnic shelters out there, and the other things that go on at other parks. So, I think we just need to remember that in conjunction with the profit, profitable things. And plus, the number of usages that the county itself has out there. We've had employee appreciation events out there, we've had, we have our quarterly summits out there, you know, the list is, the list is pretty long. So, all that being said, I know that our tourism folks were very enthusiastic about the youth sports proposal that we heard last time, and saw that maybe as a different avenue that, that might create some more revenue. The part that they talked about some uses, like everyday uses for some activities that have there. So, I mean, I think those things warrant further exploration. I think we should take a look at it, and I think that's what I'm hearing from the majority.
Yeah, you know, just to follow up with what you said, you know, the current partnership out there now, I feel is great with, you know, with you guys, and I think, you know, we do, there is multipurpose use in that facility, and, and that is something not to be ignored.
Right.
Now, it's not equivalent to a park, so, I mean, it was, you know, it was built to, I'm not going to say be a profit for the county, but at least break even if we're going to be having events. So, I mean, that's, that's the issue I have, is that it's not breaking even for the taxpayers. But there, but there are, you know, like I said, the partnership has been good. You guys are good with the community, you know, and allow, you know, the county to use, which, I mean, I guess we own it, but I, you know, we have the opportunity to use the space, you know, as we see needed, you know, the county fair, that's an, you know, important event to have. So, yeah, we've got some tough decisions to make on that. But thank you so far with everything that's went on out there. I appreciate that. Partnership so far.
Yeah, I'll pitch out one other thing that I failed to mention, that there's a big one out there, and that is all of our high school graduations. If, if that facility were not available for those purposes, we would have to find an alternative, and guess who pays for that? We do, the taxpayers of Cabarrus County. Same thing for the community college that's, that's had their graduation ceremonies out there. So, that is another big part of that list, you know, that I didn't mention. But I'm in, I would love to make a profit out there. I think that'd be great. I'm not sure that's going to happen.
And I didn't mean for us to say we want a profit. It's like a lot of things that we do, it's, it's not for a profit.
Right.
But I'm like Commissioner Mismer, we need to try to find ways to reduce the cost.
Absolutely.
Because we've been out there long enough now, that it should be, in my opinion, which I'm, I'm not, like I was telling earlier, I'm not a marketing person, but it should be at least a break even or close, and the difference is the quality of life. It's a quality of life issue for the citizens. And there is a little cost to that, but the lower we can get it, the better we're going to be.
Yeah. So, my question back to you, Rodney, is did we give you what you were looking for?
I think for the most, I think to Commissioner Shu's point about the in-house option, is there support for us to explore that? Because that would likely take 60, 90 days, if not longer, for us to do the analysis to see what that would cost with our retirement, our benefits, staffing, so is there...
Well, let me ask this, Rodney, has it ever been done before?
I believe we were in-house initially.
Originally, we ran it for a while while we were still searching for...
But that was in the beginning stages, right?
Yeah, the staff was actually county, they were county employees. It didn't break even at that time either. I don't know what the deficit was, if we have to go back and look at the financials on that. But we found out real quick that we were not experts in that entertainment industry, and that we didn't have the connections that they did, so that's why we backed down.
And I totally agree. I think it was very much the right thing to do in the beginning, but since we're this far into it now, I think it would be quite a bit easier to manage it from our own. But like I say, without the numbers, you don't know.
It would seem to me that if there were a kind of a high-level preliminary look at that, and then decide, I mean, without investing a whole lot of time, for example, all the many part-time employees that work out there, would that mean they would have to be county employees, they would have to follow all the benefit plans, and the insurance program, and so forth, which I imagine would be significantly more expensive than, than maybe the way it's currently handled? But is that a possibility?
Yes, if you all are comfortable, we can run some preliminary analysis on that.
Does that work for you? Yeah.
And then, in the meantime, based on the conversations with both the CVB and the board, we can have additional conversations with ASM and Sports Facilities about their proposals, have some final revisions made to those, and then bring those back to the board.
Okay, very good. Okay, we'll move to item 3.2 from Finance, Occupancy Tax Voluntary Disclosure Agreement. Evan and Jim?
You want me to go? It's yours.
So, the Finance Department received a letter from, actually, it came to Mr. Howden's predecessor, but received a letter from the law firm of Baker McKenzie, and they were asking for permission to enter a voluntary disclosure agreement with the county over some unpaid occupancy taxes from their client. Now, they have not told us who their client is yet. I have had the conversation, that will have to be disclosed as part of any agreement. But in essence, they represent a company like Expedia, or Travelocity, or one of these types of companies where you book a hotel through them, and then ultimately, there's facilitation, which they're called facilitators, through you as a customer, and then your accommodation as it's defined in the law, your hotel. The way the Department of Revenue guidance was, was that the facilitator, so the companies like this firm represents, would prepay the hotel company with either a prepaid credit card, or something like that, to pay the ultimate end occupancy taxes. Well, surprise, surprise, some people didn't do that. So, monies were floating out there on spent and unturned over, and they didn't elaborate on how they investigated it, but as part of a change in law, they found out that a number of funds were not remitted to Cabarrus County as they were supposed to. And that final number we have is $19,681.22. Basically, what they are asking is a waiver, or a release, so to speak, between us and their client, that we will not go after them for this unpaid portion from 2011 through 2020, in exchange for that monetary payment. I've talked with Finance, and talked a little bit with, with Tax. We would recommend the county proceeding with this. Otherwise, there's not really a way for us, as I understand it, to really track this money down. I can let Jim speak to that more. But the way the, the occupancy tax works is there's, the hotels are supposed to report it to us. If they don't, it becomes difficult to then track that money down. The good news is the law changed, and I don't have the session law, but in 2019, the General Assembly changed the law so that these companies actually pay it directly, instead of this middleman piece. So, it's not an issue after February 1st of 2020, then the pandemic happened, and so, you know, hotel accommodations dropped off, but now going forward, we get this money directly. So, it's not really an issue anymore. This is just for, for back money owed, but it would come in the form of an agreement, and, and so, I just wanted to bring it before the board and kind of get some direction as to where you guys wanted to go with this, and what other kind of questions we may need to ask this firm about their client.
So, if I understand you correctly, they're acknowledging that they haven't done what they were supposed to do, so this is like you lawyers call a plea agreement?
In a sense, it's actually interesting, because the, the way that the guidance was at the time is they would send the operator, which is the hotel, the money, and the, the law required that the operator pay it. So, the facilitator, as they're called, actually did not have the ultimate liability to pay us, but since they found out about the problem, and since they actually still have control of these prepaid cards, they're going to basically just turn that money back over to us.
Sounds to me like we ought to take the money and run.
Yes.
But I'd be anxious to hear what my fellow commissioners have to say.
Is it odd that we don't know the client?
Um, I don't know that it's odd. I think this is just them being kind of a big company, trying to not really throw their client's name out there. But, you know, I did explain to them that any agreement would need to be approved by the board, and that would become part of public record. So, I didn't really push it. I do think it's a little odd, but given that they're a large, I mean, this is a, Baker McKenzie is a multinational law firm, I wouldn't even venture to guess how many thousands of attorneys they have, they're probably not used to dealing with local governments quite on this minutia of a level.
Just, you know, we could agree to that, but without knowing who it is, or what they owe us, or it just seems odd.
And that's why I put it on tonight for, for kind of no action, is I will come back once I have more, but I really just wanted the kind of advice from the board, whether we should kind of take the money and run, and start down that path before I, I come back and tell you guys the specifics of the agreement. So, I will be providing that.
This has come up before. We've had it happen, I can't remember what year it was. I think it was before the law changed.
Yeah.
And, and it was handled in the same way, not by the same firm, but it was, it was without disclosing the client till much later. But it is, as was stated, you know, we did get money out of that other situation, but it's just hard to track it down, you know, through the county's procedures. So, you're pretty much, you know, being held in, you know, to where you, you don't know all the information, but you have enough that you know that, that it's probably what you need to proceed and do.
Wasn't, wasn't that a whole group of these third-party companies that...
It was.
That settlement?
Yeah.
Yeah? And that wasn't just us, it was statewide?
Yes.
Yeah?
And that's part of the reason, I think, for the change. Actually, I think the facilitators asked for, the big companies like this asked for the change with the General Assembly, so that they can just send that money directly and cut them in.
I stated my opinion. What, anybody else?
Yeah.
And that, that'll solve this problem, Evan?
It will, for, at least as to this particular, I mean, there could be others floating out there. It's going to be difficult for us to process it, but at least as of the beginning of 2020, the, the law has changed, and now they have to file, the facilitators have to file a report.
Okay, so it won't be reoccurring?
It will not.
Okay.
At least with this company, that there may be another...
There may be another company that potentially could owe Cabarrus County money from pre-2020, but I think your question is aft, from now forward, yes, correct. It's the, since they changed it, it's, it's getting remitted to us. And that, I could let you speak to that more. I don't know if you see...
No, you're correct. The hard part is, we don't know prior to, even this company here coming forward, we didn't know that it was owed, and I'm not sure how we would know it's owed. It's found money, yes, sir.
Who regulates that, as far as them paying what they're supposed to owe?
Well, we track it, but it's really tough to know, I mean, they self-report, so...
And so, there's nobody at the state level?
They're, not to my knowledge.
Wow.
It's kind of like sales tax, right?
It's like a sales tax. Yeah, they report their sales.
They report it every month, and if, it's illegal to report it incorrectly.
Correct, right.
If you get, yeah.
But if they don't report it...
Yeah.
The, as, as Mr. Howden said, we track it, so we can look if all of a sudden, there's like a big drop-off, or something like that, then maybe something's fishy, but other than that, it's, it gets difficult.
Okay.
So, the individual hotels, they, they have been submitting theirs, this, again, this is a third party that makes these reservations, that could be representing multiple hotels.
All right, well, I have what I need. I will respond to their firm, and we'll keep the process rolling.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move to item 3.3 from Infrastructure and Asset Management. Courthouse Expansion and Renovation Project Update. Kyle and Michael?
It's going to just be Kyle.
I thought Michael was, Michael is behind me.
Saving himself for the next couple ones. Lauren, could you display those, please? Okay, so just wanted to give you an update as we moved out of GMP 2, or the, the new 2023 building, and into the 1975 courthouse. The pictures that Lauren is displaying is the gutting or the demolition of the interior of the 1975 courthouse, and we can go through all the pictures, just because some of you have probably sat in some of those rooms, I thought it would, tried to get some jaw-dropping pictures for you, so if you could just scroll down. It just shows you all the corridors, you can see them stripping, those are the corridors between the two buildings. Shows you the entrance to the old Clerk of Courts, can call it the old now, it will be renovated to be the new Clerk of Courts, once it's said and done. We'll go down to the next one. Shows you the stripping, all the MEP, we've already moved everything out of there, and while we were able to utilize a generator from there, the schools was also able to utilize one of our chillers that came off the building. One of them was not salvageable, or was not worth salvaging, but one of them was, so we did transfer that asset to the schools. That just kind of shows you the view, that's looking out on, on Union, so I just thought some of you might find that interesting. Over the last 30 days, they've, they've installed a temporary power, completed all the site demolition, and they've started digging the actual basement foundation drains. So, that's actually what's happening inside, there's actually equipment in there that's digging those, it's just because the building was built during a time where you did not have foundation drains, which is, you see that in a lot of buildings, actually, a lot of the buildings that we have. So, there is a way to go back and dig those in, not to work as well as they would in the new building, but much better than we've had, and it'll assist us with actually water intrusion to the walls, which is what you see sometimes on the walls, especially in the basement of the courthouse. You noticed effervescence, or peeling of paint, that's what that was, is from that moisture, of not being able to move the stormwater away from the basement. We also poured the sheer wall, and over the next 30 days, they'll start getting in there and doing all their laser scanning, so they literally go in there, scan the entire building, and lay down all their control points, that's how they know where to build walls and everything. So, they're literally map it out, whereas when we did it at the first site, it was mapped out on actual concrete, because we poured all that slab, it'll actually be laid out on this, on this concrete, and then go vertical from there. They'll also start all the interior waterproofing, and then finish up the basement foundation drain assembly, and start, probably in the next 30 days, we'll start to install the new steel beams in the basement. So, it is going through well, and I did share... beams in the basement. So it is going, um, through well. And I did share, uh, more aesthetic pictures of the courtrooms being taken down with the courthouse staff and told them to circulate to their staff. Thought they would want to, they would want to see that since they had lived in there for so long. Are there any questions?
Kyle, what's the projection on the finished date?
Still in 2025.
2025.
Any other questions for Kyle? That's very nostalgic looking at that. Um, I see one of those courtrooms where I made my theatrical debut as an extra in the film Jimmy that was filmed in, in the courthouse. And now it's, now it's gone. So.
I believe I handled all the paperwork for the filming of that, that movie as well as the insurance.
I'm sure you probably did. And I frequently point out to people, uh, six-point-five minutes courthouse, back row, blurred face, blue shirt.
I was unaware of the statistics, but I'm a better man now for it. Thank you. But, but yeah, it's, it's going very well and they're moving very quickly. So, uh, we're, obviously it's a little bit easier when you're in the demo phase, but, um, everything is going well and we're situating the courthouse staff in their new spaces. So we have significant punch list items to go through and we actually, Messer, the construction manager at risk, is working in the current courthouse every single day. It's mostly mechanical and electrical things you wouldn't, you wouldn't know, just, uh, things that needed to be tweaked or didn't make it through maybe our warranty or our first week. So we're, we actually have a HVAC shutdown planned for Saturday to come back and replace a pump that burned out and all that's under warranty. So we're, it does take some coordination with the infrastructure and asset management staff, but Messer's been great to not leave us with anything. They're, they're involved every single day with our ITS and our IM staff.
So just out of curiosity, what are steel beams being added to the basement?
Structural support of those walls. So you're, you're taking out.
Because of the relocating the walls and.
The, and also going to glass.
Yeah.
You know, where part of, part of what we looked at for GMP three in front of most of this board was we value engineered out a lot of the, um, sunshades and then also some of the, what I would call landscaping. Um, but what we did still keep in there was kind of that, that glass wall. So it'll, it'll look like a continuation of the 2023 courthouse. And to provide all that, you have to go provide some structure for that.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. We move now to discussion items for action. Uh, first up is appointments to boards and committees. Uh, you've all see that in your agenda. You also should have received an email about it. Um, and I think all of those are pretty well covered. Does anybody have any questions or additions or comments? Okay. If not, that will move on to our consent agenda. Uh, and the next item is voting delegate designation for NCACC 116th Annual Conference and Legislative Goals Conference. But I think that's a typo. We're not doing Legislative Goals Conference, are we, Lauren? Yeah. So this is just for the, uh, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners' Annual Conference, which will be in Raleigh the 24th, 25th and 26th of this month. Uh, I know that I plan to attend. I think maybe Commissioner Meesmer has signed up for that as well. Um, and we could certainly add Commissioner Farr if, if you would like.
I'll let you know. What, what are the dates on that again? Cause this says Wednesday, but you just.
I think it's Thursday, Friday and Saturday. Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. Um, I am happy to do that. If you would like to, to, to have that designation, I'm neutral about it. What's, what's?
I'm fine with you being the designee.
Fine. We do, we need, do need to, to, to send that to them. So I would, at this time entertain a motion to suspend the rules, to take action on this today.
So moved.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes and I will now entertain a motion to designate myself as the voting delegate for the NCACC conference.
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you. Uh, next up is item 4.3, uh, vehicle purchases and Rosh Qatari is going to talk with us about those.
Good afternoon. Um, this item is for the purchase of, uh, six vehicles, four for the human services, uh, division, uh, due to increased utilization. And then, uh, one for emergency medical services and one for infrastructure asset management for new positions that were added in the FY 24 budget. Total of $231,000 and that'll be funded from the general fund fund balance. Any questions?
And this is just following through things we've already approved in the budget, correct?
The positions were approved in the budget. The vehicle requests are new requests.
Okay.
So the two, two new position, new positions had vehicles that were not included by omission?
Right.
And so this corrects that. The four additional human services vehicles are new. That is a new need that has been identified. They have a significant increase in both CPS calls, reports that they have to respond to, as well as children in foster care, and they do not have enough vehicles to accommodate that. And buying the vehicles is much better deal for the county than doing mileage reimbursement for each individual employee.
Did we bid this quarter out?
Uh, we do. Uh, we have contracts in place and contracts that we use.
Could, could we, you disclose who the lucky vendor is on this? Is it a local?
I do not know on this one.
You don't know the local vendor? Okay. But it is, it is a local vendor though?
Typically if it's Ford products, we go through Hillbush.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that item? All right. Thank you. Uh, item 4.4, revised agreement with the Water and Sewer Authority of Cabarrus County and Kelly Sifford will lead us on that one.
Thank you. As you all are aware, uh, the Water and Sewer Authority has been working on their expansion and we are, uh, been presented with a new agreement to not only allocate that, but also allocate an extra 20,000 gallons, uh, to Mount Pleasant to handle our, um, active living and, uh, parks and library facility that we will be constructing there. And so this agreement is just a simple update to that to, um, reallocate those amounts.
Okay. Questions for Kelly?
And I believe Rich has reviewed this.
Yes, I have. The, um, the general assembly actually made a, a change to some of the rules to, that allows the, uh, WASC to, to increase the capacity right now ahead of the expansion. That's where this additional 2.1 million gallons are, is coming from. And when the, uh, uh, board of the Water and Sewer Authority met, they, uh, they carved out this 20,000 gallons for the, for the town of Mount Pleasant, for the new library and, and park. Uh, so that's coming off the top. Then the rest of it's being, um, um, a portion between the other municipalities.
Yeah. And since I'm on the board, to further expound on what, uh, Rich was saying was that when we put the, the park in Mount Pleasant, they didn't have but 65,000 gallons of capacity, 65, 65,000 gallons capacity. But the park took 20,000 of that away and we felt like it was unfair because it's a county park, county facility. And so we, um, made Mount Pleasant whole by giving them that 20,000 back. That was the purpose of that.
And as a reminder that we, we do not have, as a county, an allocation that comes to us. It all goes to the jurisdictions.
So I think we give a thank you to Concord, Kannapolis, Harrisburg and Mount Pleasant for being willing to share a portion. There's a chart in here that shows the percentage that came from each of those to, to make sure we were covered on that project. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up from Department of Human Services, Family Caregiver Support Program Grant Budget Revisions. We're happy to have Anthony Hodges for that and the next item as well.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak with you. Uh, on the family caregiver, uh, support grant, uh, when it was in the FY 24 budget, we used our numbers from FY 23 because the state hadn't given us their final allocations yet, uh, which is what we normally have to do with those. They usually come out with allocations to around June. Uh, when we got the actual allocation, it's $489 higher than what we budgeted. So it is a hundred, it's a hundred percent, uh, state and federal. There's no county match. Those extra funds were putting toward, uh, training for family caregivers as well as supplies. Usually we help provide them with like nutrition and continent supplies.
Any questions on that item? All righty. Well, you've got the next one. We'll Home and Community Care Block Grant Funding Plan Revision.
Yes, sir. Yeah. If, if you recall, there's in June, when I presented the, the HCCBG, the Home and Community Care Block Grant Funding Plan to you, I, I, I mentioned at the time that we'd got the actual allocation, but it was too late to put in the budget. And this is just correcting that. We received an additional $69,844 and that does include it. There's a 10%, required 10% match for that. And that extra funding, the, the advisory committee voted to put that, to divide those funds between home and, uh, home improvement and, uh, adult day health and homemade and meals on wheels. So those, those extra funds are divided between those four programs. If anyone has any questions.
Questions on that one? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 4.7, Department of Human Services Transportation Rural State Operating Grant. Happy to have Bob Bushy.
Thank you commissioners for allowing me to come before you this afternoon. Um, in April, NC DOT released a competitive grant, the State Rural Operating Grant to be used for fuel. Um, even though Cabarrus County is classified as a large urban, we do provide some trips in the rural area. So we were eligible to apply for this grant. We were awarded $191,000 for fuel. This is funded 100% by the state. There is no county match. Um, and it does not require a public hearing. Um, it does require a budget amendment because although we have our fuel expense budgeted, we need to put an amendment in there to account for the revenue.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Bushy?
I don't have any questions regarding this, but I, I know there was a number of vacancies in the transportation department. Is that resolving itself now or is it?
We are getting there. Um, we've still got a few to fill, but we have several, uh, in the onboarding process, getting ready to go through orientation.
So it is getting better?
It is getting better.
Okay, good.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 4.8 from Fire Services, Mount Pleasant Fire Department Staffing Grant Inter Local Agreement. We're happy to have Jacob Thompson for that item.
Good afternoon. So as part of the FY 24 budget, um, the commissioners chose to allocate a portion of the budget to Mount Pleasant Fire Department, uh, for the staffing grant. So as part of that, since they are part of the town, um, as a matter of procedure, we will need to execute a interlocal agreement with the town of Mount Pleasant in order to allocate those funds to them. And so this is just an agreement detailing that out.
Any questions on that one? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, Franklisk Park Office Concessions and Mini Golf Renovations Bid Award and Michael Miller and Kyle Billiford.
So we're here to present on the, the bid results for the Franklisk Park Office Concessions and Mini Golf Renovations. Um, we posted the invitation to bid, uh, for formal bidding on June 23rd, 2023. Um, a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting was held on site on July 6th and bids were received and opened on July 27th at 1:00 PM. Um, the recommendation of the low bidder is actually ground thunder construction. And before I make the motion, because I am going to be asking, uh, the board to suspend the rules and allow us to move forward so we can go with mobilization and quite frankly, dem- demolition as soon as possible. Um, I don't want to give the public a gap in between construction projects out there. So I don't want to sneak attack them. But, um, just wanted to let you know, six bids total, which we thought was very good for a formal project that is, um, $2 million or less, especially in today's market with what we're seeing for our construction manager at risk trade packages. Um, so obviously the trade packages in a large project are smaller, but we've had issues getting bidders. So it was nice to see six. Um, the deltas or the, the differences between the numbers was even more impressive. Uh, between number one and number two bidders, uh, between the winner and the second place was less than $6,000. So that, that probably speaks volumes to the design of the project, um, and also kind of exactly how the bid documents were worded. The overall delta, so from number one to number six was 424,000, which again, over the past couple of years, I've seen deltas that have ranged from 1.5 to $3 million for that many. So, um, was looking at that and was very optimistic. Um, ground thunder construction is the low bidder. Um, that low bid, uh, came in at $1,686,875. With the add-ons and the owners contingency that we're, we're establishing in that contract, the contract would be a value of $1,836,875. So Michael and I are here in front of the board asking you to suspend the rules and approve the contract between Cabarrus County and Ground Thunder Construction, um, for the value of $1,836, sorry, $1,836,875. And the only other thing I would note is we have not worked with Ground Thunder Construction before.
Where, where are they from?
Charlotte. Yeah. The Charlotte area and predominantly up until this point, um, at least what we could do on internet research is they provided a, a lot of concrete work and a lot of, um, dumpster rentals and things for construction companies. In fact, all of the GCs that we talked to have used them for con, for concrete and, and spoke very highly of them. Um, I believe they've just started getting into the actual general contracting business.
They're doing concrete work on the courthouse now?
Yeah.
Their, their owners are, are from con, are from Cabarrus County, I, I do believe.
They've, they've been at the last couple bids that we've had, uh, project down at Rob Wallace Phase 2B, they were one of the bidders. So we, we've gotten to know them and I, I have no concerns about the work that they're doing. I just wanted to make it clear that we have not used them before. It's actually, in my opinion, um, to be able to get some other bidders in here that we get, uh, comfortable in a, in project experience with is a good thing.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. If there are none, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules of procedures due to time constraints to take action on this tonight.
So moved.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second, or a couple of seconds. Um, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes and I would entertain a motion to approve the contract amendment between Cabarrus County and Ground Thunder Construction and authorize the county manager to execute the contract amendment on behalf of Cabarrus County, subject to review and revisions by the county attorney. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to item 4.10, um, Library and Active Living Center at Mount Pleasant and Virginia Foal Park.
Thank you. Yes, it's a, it's a mouthful. Um, we have, we had already presented to the board, edifice is the construction manager at risk that was selected based on qualifications for the Mount Pleasant complex, um, which includes the library, the active living center and the park. Um, they've gone through their GMP process, which is obviously a very lengthy and tiered bidding process for all the different trades. And we did have to open it back up because we could not get enough submitters. And that just kind of shows you what the market is like right now. And that just kind of shows you what the market is like right now. So, it was difficult on four different packages to get the number of bidders that we needed. So, we opened it back up and we did get those bids. We feel that we've gone through the value engineering process. We have involved Active Living and Parks and the libraries in that value engineering process and the infrastructure asset management group to try to drive the costs down as much. And to give you an idea, some of those value engineering options had to deal with stormwater controls, the type of seed we're going to use for the ground cover, as well as some elevations in the parking lot, which actually affected the amount of dirt that we would have to move. In essence, the amount of dirt we would not have to move. So, we went through that entire process to shave as much as we could. And we now have a GMP that is underneath the number that the board had asked us to stay under, which was $26.5 million for the actual hard cost, with some of the soft costs, the ITS and the FFNE, or the furniture was not included in that cost. So, we are looking for approval to bring that GMP, to pass that through for the approval by Mr. Downs. And that total would bring that contract with Edifice to $23,555,976.
Okay.
I would like to note that includes the pre-construction and also the owner's contingency.
Questions on that item, Commissioners? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules of procedure due to time restraints to approve this item tonight. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And I would entertain a motion to approve the contract between Cabarrus County and Edifice LLC, and to authorize the county manager to execute the contract amendment on behalf of Cabarrus County, subject to review or revisions by the county attorney. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. That motion passes.
We hope to see you out there on Thursday for the groundbreaking.
Very good, thank you. And that is Thursday, August the 10th, at 5:30.
We're not even needed, thank you, sir, you nailed it.
Great, thank you. We would like to extend an invitation to the public as well. Of course, that's been, I think, publicized in the newspaper and on our social media channels, so hopefully we'll have a good turnout. We move now to item 4.11, from the Planning Department, Budget Amendment to Revise Home Grant 2020 and Close Home Grant 2015 and Home Grant 2016. We're happy to have Susie Morris for that item.
Good evening. This is a budget amendment to revise the home grant for 2020. There are some expenditures and some revenues that need to be corrected within the budget. And then, Finance also feels that it is appropriate at this time that they can close out year 2015 in year 2016. So, it's fairly straightforward. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Susie? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And we move now to item 4.12, from Sheriff's Office, Acceptance of Bike Safe Grant. Happy to have Chief Deputy Burchett with us for that item.
Good evening. So, Bike Safe is a program we've been doing for about eight years at the Sheriff's Office, and it really is a matter of training our officers to be able to teach the motoring public, specifically motorcycle drivers, to be safer on the roads. So, we've been doing this for eight years. We have received a grant for the past six years from the Governor's Highway Safety Patrol. And we are being awarded the grant again, no match, $5,000. Just asking for the budget amendment to accept these monies that would be awarded in September.
Great. Questions for the chief deputy? I'm always happy to accept grants with no match.
Me too.
So, bring us some more.
Very good.
Okay, then we move to item 4.13, Fiscal Year 24 Radio Tower Revenues and Reappropriation of Funds from '23.
Yes, so what this is, is our radio towers, the operation fund was basically a capital outlay fund until November of '22, when the previous finance director wanted to move these monies into the general fund. And what happens is with these radio towers, we actually receive revenues from communications companies for them to rent space, basically, to use them. Well, these revenues go towards the operations, upkeep, that type of thing that we need to continue to operate them. And now that it's in the general fund, we just need to create a budget item, a budget line, several budget lines, basically, under the radio operations fund.
Great. Questions on that item? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to Commissioner Agenda Request. First up is Electronic Pet Fences and Associated Issues. This was one that I requested be made, be put on the agenda. We had received comments from Mr. Gus Arango, who is with us here tonight. I think all of you have received emails as well. This is regarding, and hopefully, our folks from the Sheriff's Office can answer some questions. I think, I'm certainly familiar with invisible fences for pets in the area. I know that there's been a lot of discussion about electronic collars. I'm not sure if that's an additional item over and above that. But, Sheriff, if y'all would be willing to kind of bring us up to date on that. I will mention also, in your agenda, we have put together ordinances from all the municipalities, as well as some of the surrounding counties, to see what their policies are and how they line up with us. Thank you for being here.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to introduce Lieutenant Torelli. Jimmy is in charge of our Animal Control Division, so he's our resident expert on all things animal control. So, he's certainly here to ask any questions or answer any questions that's related to that. You know, obviously, this has been brought up as to whether it can adequately control a dog, but also related to the current county ordinance. There is nothing in the current county ordinance that requires an invisible fence, nor, as you referred to, an electronic collar, or a shock collar, as they're commonly called, that some people use to control their animals. I'll, for educational purposes, I'll let Jimmy go over the county ordinance and how it applies and how we enforce that county ordinance as it relates to controls of dogs on property.
And I could provide copies of this also online, but as of now, the ordinance states if an adult 18 years of age or older is on its premises, on its land, and out there and able to verbally control their dog, that suffices the ordinance. In this case, we're going, not only are they doing that, they're also having the e-collar on the dog. There's actually two levels of it. So, as the law says, that they can be out there as long as they're 18 or older, if they have verbal, you know, control of the dog. If a dog comes off of the property, then obviously, we take another measure and can issue citations on the county ordinance.
The other thing I did was ask our intelligence analyst to pull the last six months of calls involving electronic fences. And the most common reference to electronic fences within that call list was the fact that we had occurrences where someone opens the door and their dog runs out and then leaves their property inadvertently. And where electronic fences were commented on, it was, you know, they ran out, I didn't have control of it, I'm going to get an electronic fence. So, again, it's not required by the ordinance in any way. We view it as an extra step that someone's taking, you know, when they're bringing their animal out, nor is the electronic collar. And also, you correct me if I'm wrong, the electronic collars are not a substitute for a leash when the animal is off the owner's property.
That's correct, yes.
So, they augment control of the animals. They're not required or utilized or referenced as a standalone device as related to our ordinance as far as a leash law is concerned, which most people commonly refer to it as a leash law.
And so, if I'm understanding what you're saying correctly, if somebody is on their own property and they are allowed to have their dog out there with them, not on a leash, not with an electronic collar or anything, as long as they have control of...
Verbal control in our 18 years of age, considering an adult. Yes.
Right. So, somebody under 18 years old, even if they do have verbal control, that's still a violation.
Would be a violation per our ordinance, correct?
So, there are no requirements to have a leash, no requirements to have an invisible fence, no requirements to have whatever the other electronic collar is or anything. So, there are no requirements at all?
As long as they're outside and they're an adult, no.
Uh huh, okay. And so, if I understand correctly, the concern that I've heard was that they not be allowed to have an electronic leash as an alternative, that they are requesting a physical leash. And so, none of these other ordinances require that in any of our adjacent counties, if I'm reading it correctly.
That is correct.
Now, how is ours different from, let's say, the city of Concord?
The city of, this is a county ordinance, so this covers every municipality in this Cabarrus County.
Every municipality, so they fall under that same...
Since we actually work in those municipalities, we enforce this county ordinance in Concord, Kannapolis, Midland, Harrisburg.
Gotcha, okay. And so, then when we look at Rowan County, it says sufficient restraint shall include, but is not limited to restraint by a leash attached to a harness or collar or similar effective or humane device that is physically capable of restraining an animal. Now, that's one step further than us, right?
If it's saying it's required, yes, because I don't think they're listing verbal commands in that one. They're probably saying something like an electronic collar.
Right. Commissioners, questions or comments? And of course, we've got Union County, which says any animal shall be considered under restraint if it is within the real property limits of its owner or secured by an adequate leash or lead or confined within a secure enclosure. And then, we've got Stanley County, and they do refer to electronic fencing. A dog is under restraint if it is inside an area on the owner's property secured by a functional, properly maintained electronic fencing device. And then, Ardell County says restraint means that an animal is under sufficient physical human control, such as a leash, cage, or carrier, bridle, or similar effective and humane device that restrains and controls the animal or adequately contained by a fence on the premises. So, that one's one step further than us, too.
Yep.
And there are a number of other references. So, if, to make any change to this ordinance, that would require this board passing a resolution and then having a public hearing? Is that right? What?
No, I don't think you have to have a public hearing on that ordinance.
Really?
I don't think so. I don't think that's one that is required under these statutes.
Uh huh.
Is that right, Lord?
Yeah. So, it would require, it would just require that we come up with the wording that would be agreeable to the board if you feel that a change would be in order. Which this is, that's a little bit different than what, you know, what I had thought. And now, I think that in the email request that we had received has some very specific comments about, yeah, said, "Please remove Section B of the ordinance and don't allow electronic leashes or fences as a substitute for a real physical dog leash." Now, that's one that I think, I would imagine that there is a pretty substantial number of individual, I mean, invisible fences all throughout the county.
It's very common.
Multiple ones in my own neighborhood. So, I suspect that that would create quite a hardship for a lot of folks that have invested some pretty substantial amounts of money for those systems.
I think it's pretty obvious that, you know, our ordinance does need to be updated. I don't want to see us taking away the rights of our citizens for one or two complaints. But I think it does need to be updated, though, the restraint of a dog, whether it be through a physical leash, a leash that the dog is on, and then, of course, on their own property. But I tend to agree with you about the invisible fences. People's made substantial investments. They have them to keep their dogs in. And I don't think it would be right for us to take that away from them. They've already got it. But I think a physical restraint, though, through a leash, and being, of course, 18 years and older and have restraint of the dog would be something we'd want to look at. But I don't want to see us get too stringent, where we're taking away freedoms.
And of course, part of, a lot of the discussion that we have about a lot of issues along these lines is the enforceability of, and we do not want to create ordinances or rules that are not enforceable. And so, I certainly would appreciate some comment from... Everybody's got it, goes off at the same time.
I'll make the call again.
Great.
Just hit your side button, I minded.
Hit the side button, make sure.
Great, thank you. As to, I'm sure that you gentlemen are knowledgeable about those situations and other situations. If you have comments, we'd love to hear them.
From my point of view, it would be very difficult for me to simply go up and try to enforce something on somebody's property if they're simply out in the front yard throwing a ball with the dog. And if that was a violation, that would just, I think that would put us in a very tough spot. Because you ride through the neighborhood anywhere, any time of year, the people are out with their dogs in the yard, not running loose, you know, they've got control. I just think that being a violation would kind of tie our hands and start having us enforce some things that, you know. That's just my opinion.
Well, I think one of the important things to also consider is, you know, it is a countywide ordinance, so it's a little bit different if you're looking at subdivisions, those types of things, versus Rhymertown. You know, the northwestern area of the county or the eastern area of the county, where a homeowner owns five or 10 acres. And they're going to walk out back to check on their cows or their garden. They're probably going to have their dog go with them. You know, it's... uh, you know, while we always have discretion and we try to utilize that, we try to warn folks, we try to work with them, because, uh, dog owners can have their dogs get out accidentally, where there was no intention to release the dog and allow it to run, where we have repeat calls, we do cite individuals that are not exercising apparent control of their animal, reasonable control of their animal, we'll also say that, you know, dogs that are in fences will jump fences and dig under fences, and, you, you know, they're gonna do the things that dogs do, um, not in any way diminishing, we certainly want to make sure the public is safe, um, we also address, you, you know, vicious dogs, dog bites, those types of things, we have very clear cut procedures that we have to adhere to whenever there's those situations that ensure the safety of the public as well, so I think there's a lot of factors here, I mean, uh, does a three foot or a six foot leash make sense on a, you know, a two or three acre property versus, you know, a tenth of an acre property, I, I mean, you, you know, densely populated, I, I think there's variances there, um, a, as well, so we try to look at all of that when enforcing our county ordinance related to that, and, um, we look at calls for service, how many calls have come in from those locations, complaints, those types of things, versus, um, this is the first time this individual, dog owner's dog has gotten loose, and, um, you, you know, and, and doing more of an educational piece with those individuals, and, and not so much, you, you know, that firm enforcement right off the bat.
So if, if I were to have a situation, if I live, I, I understand, you know, that this ordinance is, you know, encompasses the entire county, including municipalities, but if I'm living in unincorporated area and the houses are not on two acre lots, or smaller acre lots, and, um, let's say, a, a dog gets loose, and I call and say, hey, you know, this dog's being aggressive, how, and I call animal control, how quickly are they gonna come out to-
So we, we typically have two, we, we break our county down into three zones, zone one being Kannapolis and the Odell area, the north end, um, our zone two is Concord City and Harrisburg, and zone three is, uh, Midland Mount Pleasant, so, uh, depending on if they're on a call, where their location is, I, I can't, our average response time right now is, for non-emergency, is thirteen to fifteen minutes, um, on non-emergency, um, I'll have to pull the stats on an emergency call, but that's on a regular, um, depending on the severity of the call or the, the situation, but our average, uh, response time is thirteen to fifteen minutes.
Okay, that's what I was curious, I didn't know if it was hours that, you know-
No, 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 no.
Right, and, uh, also our patrol units can respond as well, they carry some limited equipment with them, uh, a catch pole, uh, so that if they have to intervene and they're the closer vehicle and they can get there quicker, uh, they can do the limited, they're not equipped with the ability to transport necessarily, or to tranquilize necessarily, but to be able to take some intervention activity, you, you know, that may be required.
Sure.
I, I agree with Commissioner Sue, um, I think we need to look at it a little bit, I don't know what, what the right answer is, we don't want to take people's freedoms away, but in this case, with this man, um, his cat, his kids can't even play in the front yard, so in essence, he's a prisoner in his own house, so because we don't want to take the freedom away of one person, we have in essence took the freedom away of somebody. So I, I think it's gonna be a fine line that we have to walk, again, I don't know what the answer is, I know it's gonna deal with enforcement and non-enforcement, um, it's something I'm willing to look at and see if, at least we can find a happy medium somewhere.
Any other comments? So to proceed forward, um, with this, um, and I, I, I offer this as a suggestion, I mean, I, I would like to, um, for maybe the sheriff's office to, to, to take an additional look at this, and, um, now, in, in this particular situation, it is my understanding that, that you've only gotten one call to this location?
We've not received any calls for service to this location, the only call for service was the one that I dispatched out there to talk with the parties involved.
Right, okay, Mr. Arango, I'm gonna allow you to speak for a minute, are you saying that you have made calls and they've not been answered?
Correct, to the animal control department, not directly to the sheriff's, I left voicemails and I had never gotten an answer, the only answer I got was my next door neighbor who said, he got a phone call a few days later saying, you're in-
Okay, I think the, the, the proper, the, the proper route of notification is nine one one.
Or the non-emergency, yeah, correct.
I keep getting referred to, to, to that department though.
Right, okay, um-
Every time I call.
So I, I, I think probably, loo- looking at, and of course, you, you, you may be prepared to answer this question right now, um, wha- whether you folks think that there is any, um, adjustment that, that is needed in this ordinance, or if you think it's working well the way it is?
I, I mean, I, I, I think it's debatable, uh, to be honest with you, not to give you a non-answer, but, uh, our expertise does not lie in crafting ordinances.
Right.
Um, it, it lies in enforcing ordinances, I think we would also need to speak with the district attorney's office, uh, in the event for prosecution of these types of cases, because often they have some concerns as it relates to the criminal prosecution of certain ordinances, so I, I think it's, it, it's a little more involved, and I say this based on past ordinances that we've looked at, um, and, and making sure that all parties that get affe- affected by the passing of an ordinance that has criminal penalties assigned to it, you, you know, you, you need to bring in everybody's opinion on, on that particular thing.
Right, I think this, this is somewhat similar to the conversation that we had a few months ago about solicitation ordinances.
Yes.
Um, I know that we've received several emails over the last week or so from folks that are still, um, concerned about that in their neighborhoods, and I think that was our conclusion on that issue was, um, that, that it was not something that we could effectively, or that you guys could effectively enforce, um, and so we, we chose not to take any action, um, on, on that item, and so that, that's just a decision that this board's gonna have to make, uh, as to whether or not we want to, to pursue, uh, changes to this, um, or not, um, and I'm kind of hearing mixed feedback.
I have a question, uh, for the sheriff and, um, and for you as well, so what, um, in the meantime, while we're, you know, thinking about this or going through a decision about ordinance change, what should this gentleman do as far as his situation, if, um, what route, should, should he call nine one one, there's a situation, um, is that the route he should be taking at this time?
Certainly, at, at any time if, if, uh, Mr. Arango feels that himself or family members are, are threat or in immediate danger, um, to call us immediately, either by nine one one or the non-emerg- emergency number, um, both get our, you, you know, if, if it's that type of, they do screen the calls, whether you're wanting an animal control officer to simply come to your residence and talk about your neighbor's dog, that's, that's a non-emergency, we'll route it through animal control, or if it's an issue of any type of domesticated animal issue, it, it, that is not of an urgent matter, um, you, you know, I simply say that, you know, Mr. Arango has said that, you know, his neighbor's dog has pursued his children to where they had to run in the front of the house, in my opinion, that would be an emergency call.
Yeah.
And we've not received those.
Right.
We've not received those, um, so I don't know if it was how it was couched to the communications and they routed it somewhat different, um, you, you know, that, that, that could be the case, um, but in those cases, we get somebody out there because that, that potentially turns into a vicious dog call, and there are certain requirements by, by statute that we have to adhere to and have the dog quarantined, those types of things, or determine whether it's vicious or not, so there's a procedural process that we go through based on that, can you add any additional?
No, I mean, that's, I, you know, they're, they often, uh, you know, if they wish to speak to animal control, I get it all the time where they reroute calls to my office, I work in the field, it may be a day or so before I get those, so that may have been just a matter of, of miscommunication, so, um, yeah, no, I mean, I think you covered it, I think you covered everything, that's correct.
And we, we typically do not have public comments at these work sessions, but if you have a question, I'll allow you to, to answer it.
The situation is-
If you, if you have something to say, you need to come up to the microphone so our viewing audience can hear you as well.
Appreciate it.
This is televised live.
Perfect.
So I see you're recording, we're recording it for you.
Yes, perfect, thank you.
Yes.
So the situation is, obviously, I have a lot of kids running around my house, six year olds to ten year olds running around constantly, this massive dog lunges at, at them, even if they're at the property line, these kids, I mean, you could stand over there and this massive dog is like a rottweiler, lunges and the owner has to scream at him, stop, and we're like praying, oh my God, he does stop, because it's constantly lunging, even me, and barking, almost like, I feel like I have to record, so it's this threat that I no longer feel safe having my kids outside, because even, even if that dog is on their property, it's lunging at them, almost, and it's crossed my property line a bunch of times, besides the fact, it's the fact that my kids are terrorized because this dog is barking his head off, saying, I want to rip your head off, and I'm going after you, and unless this guy presses the little button with the collar, pray to God that it works, that's the only way I'm gonna stop, but he's like, how comfortable do you feel if a massive dog is barking, slobbering through the, through the mouth, like he wants to get, come after your kids, and myself and my wife goes at dog, and I told the neighbor and he's like, wow, my wife did that, the dog got away from her, the dog was five feet away from us, in my driveway, barking its head off, one, I, I, I thought that was gonna, that was the end of it, because the, the dog was right there, was ready to attack, and I didn't know what to do until she finally pressed the button and the dog went back from our property and walked back, I didn't call him at that situation because I didn't know, I didn't know what to do, but I thought maybe that can't be legal, and that's when I started reaching with the emails afterwards, and I started saying, this cannot keep going, because one of these, one of these days, that dog's gonna ignore that buzz, cross my property line, and it's gonna kill literally six or seven kids, out in my front yard playing almost every day, and this is a, a huge accident waiting to happen, imagine a rottweiler next to you, lunging at your kids every day, there's gotta be something we could do, because something's gonna happen, that's all I'm saying.
So, so, so I think, you know, the situation we have is that they, they have, they have property rights, and for us to be able to dictate what they can and cannot do on their property is a problem for us to do, I understand that situation, and I am very sympathetic to that, I would not want to live next to that, I would not want to see that, I wouldn't want to have to, to deal with that, I mean, that would be terrifying, I agree with that, um, but I think, you know, it is a, it's a very fine line of what we can do, now, let me ask you this, Sheriff, if you had, if, if they had photos or videos of that dog crossing the line, and I know it only could take one more time, it could be a disaster, I agree, but if you had videos or photos of that, is that something that could be then dealt with at-
Absolutely, we, you know, we, we do that all the time, quite frankly, investigating, uh, dogs that are allowed to run loose or not supervised, we will have neighbors that will get us video, uh, we'll take a look at it, we'll meet with those dog owners, we'll cite them if we need to, uh, you, you know, depending on that particular situation, uh, we'll, we'll be glad to address it, um, we did send two animal control officers out there, I sent them out there, um, they went and spoke to Mr. Arango as well as the neighbor next door, and, uh, we made sure that neighbor next door understood.
And how recent was that?
That was in the past thirty-
Yeah, I would say past month.
Past thirty days-
Okay.
That we did.
We're still doing it, nothing changed.
So, you know, if, you know, if a dog was approaching me in that driveway, I would have some protection, you know, uh, you know, especially if you've got children running around out there, I would, I would protect myself, um, but, um, you know, do you have photos and videos of this dog that's crossed the line?
I have thought of recording, I don't have a twenty four, it's one of those bells that picks up like a minute or two of movement and that's it, but-
If there's any evidence-
I've thought of, yeah, not, not now, but I'd-
Because see, I would hate for us to put into an ordinance that a person has to have their dog leashed on their own property, I mean, we're putting thousands of citizens in violation at that point, um, and, and that's a, in my opinion, a property, you know, property rights issue, so there is a fine line, I think we'll have to work through that, but I, you know, as I said, I understand exactly what you're saying, and, you know, it could turn into a very dangerous situation, I mean, it sounds like a dangerous situation now, but, you, you know, but do understand where we're coming from as well, is that, you know, we can't just pass something immediately and change the entire ordinance and put thousands of other Cabarrus County, Cabarrus County citizens in a situation where they're then violation of ordinance and, um, it's very tricky.
Let me ask you this, and this might be out on left field, because I've thought of putting a barrier between them and us, but our HOA trumps us on, oh, you can't put like bushes or anything between you, you, you two, because it's not part of, you know, our, our bylaws, is there any way of overtrumping that, if it's a safety issue for us to be able to protect ourselves and be able to put a barrier between two properties like that, or is that untouchable on, on your end if, uh-
That's not my expertise, but there we're running into a property rights thing, you should have the ability to do that with your own property, but-
No, my HOA-
But if you, HOA's saying that you can't, but, uh, you might would have to hire an attorney to, to work through that.
To trump that one.
Yeah.
Nightmare, nightmare, trying to prevent it, but-
I would, I would think that, the, just, the, the situation that you described, um, if there is a vicious dog loose, um, and it comes in, onto your property, and you call nine one one, and they say, is this an emergency, if you have children in the yard, I would say, yes, it's an emergency, and I think that, that if you came to talk to this board or any other board, um, and, and you, and we had that, we have received twenty-five calls, twenty-five complaints about this situation at this address, then I think that's gonna be a lot easier for us to be able to, to, to deal with it, because I, Commissioner Meesmer is right, there are literally thousands of people that would be impacted, um, uh, in, in the, in the county, as far as, as far as their rights, perhaps they, they don't have a prob- a problem, you know, I've observed in my own neighborhood, um, dogs that, that I know are not vicious, but they have a, um, um, an invisible fence, and, and people walking down sidewalk think that they are, uh, but they don't cross over that fence, so, I mean, there's just multitude of different, different situations, but, uh, I mean, I, I would think that, um, to, to create a, a record of these incidences would probably be the first step.
And is there a way of categorizing a dog as vicious, like if you went and, you had those multiple calls, and now the police is, okay, we need to evaluate this dog, or an expert's gotta come in and tell us if this is a vicious dog, quote vicious, maybe that one does have to be maybe leashed up, not all the other innocent ones, but maybe you have a do, you have a vicious dog that's categorized by an expert to be a danger to society, can that be a special case, maybe?
There are, the, the ordinance does state a, a set, um, requirements that it must follow to be considered vicious, and I, and I have, um, deemed several vicious in the, you know, past few years, and it is a confinement, it's a different confinement, but a dog just barking and running loose does not qualify it to be named or deemed vicious, uh, per our ordinance.
Right.
I'd like to know what vicious is, but-
Well, I think if you, if you make those claws, calls, and you have a problem, then, then that, that would trigger that determination.
I'll have to put a camera out there, start recording.
Um, would, wa- am I correct on that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
You know, one more question, and I'll stop there, regarding guns, do I have the right to defend myself, a dog comes over and is about to attack my kids, to pull out a gun?
You have the right to defend yourself, but you, we also, we urge people to adhere to any local firearms ordinances, it being in the city, um, so you'll need to, to make sure you adhere to that, um, on his point, there are lots of different types of self-defense other than a firearm, is what we tell people, whether it's pepper spray or stick or a golf gun, there's just many things that you can actually use before we get to that, to get to that level, obviously, when we're talking about, we're not gonna give anyone permission to do that, okay, because there's so many more things that go along with that, you know, what's behind, what you're shooting at, is there other children, and you're in a neighborhood, you're on quarter acre lots, we just don't see that to be feasible, so my suggestion to most folks and you is to, to definitely arm yourself, but let's find something a little less lethal, just for the safety of the rest of the public.
Okay, any other comments on that item? Okay, any other comments on that item? All right, we move to item four, five point two. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes.
Midland Library Discussion, and Commissioner Wortman, I think you had requested this one go on the agenda.
I did. I was asked as, as the Midland liaison to put the Midland Library Discussion on our work session. What they were asking is, as of now, they have not funded the, the lease in their budget, and we have not funded that lease in our budget. And Town Manager Doug Paris wanted me to bring up the end goal, that if the county doesn't fund it, and the town of Midland doesn't fund it, then what's going to happen is, is it going to close? Who's going to close it? And so I told him that I would put it on here, on our agenda for discussion. And we can, we can discuss it for however long and, and bring up the history of, of everything else, and, and that's kind of where it's at, a brief synopsis of it. But as of now, they do not have it funded in their budget, and he's needing direction from the county as to, do they need to plan on it, or are we going to pick up the, the lease? It expires in December of this year, and according to the lease that was sent, it's $3,500 a month, so somewhere between $42,000 and $46,000 a year. And it expires December 31st of this year, 2023. And for those that don't know where it's at, it's at the corner of 2427 and 601, in the building where their town hall is at. They have been paying the lease for five years, and we have provided the, the staffing. We've, let me see, we also provided, when it opened in 2019, in 2020, we replaced the carpet in a leased building, which we normally don't lease libraries. The cost for that was just under $10,500. I think it's also important to note that in our current budget this year, and Rodney or Lauren can, Mike can correct me if I'm wrong, but we added two full-time personnel to a library, and I think also several part-time hours, so that we could make the Town and Midland Library a full-time functioning library. So the, the way I look at it, we're doing our part, we've provided the people, it's going full-time in this coming budget. Personally, I think that as a collaboration or cooperation, that they, they should pay the lease on it. To me, that's us working together with them. It's kind of like, if you know you have a mortgage, you know you have insurance, you know you have a cell phone payment, you should still budget to make those payments, even if you're unsure. In my opinion, it's almost as if the county's being bullied into forcing, trying to force us to pay for it. And, and I don't agree with that. I look at it as, as cooperation and collaboration, and I think we're doing our part by, by providing those extra people and, and providing the resources to make it happen. So at that point, I'll open it up to, to anybody else to expand on anything and go from there.
Okay, Commissioners, other comments on that item?
Well, I, I agree with Commissioner Wortman's synopsis of, you know, the history of what's going on. And after all, you know, I don't think that we ever really agreed to do a lease. We don't lease nowhere else, and so I don't see that it would be the right thing to do. But Midland's had five years, the term of this lease, to find them a piece of ground to build their building, like the other municipalities have done, and yet they have chosen to not do that for whatever reason. And so I, I couldn't support the county picking up a lease for Midland. And if it closes, it won't be because of the county, it'd be because of Midland did not renew their lease. And that's pretty simple to me.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll speak, speak on that. As a Midland resident, not right now, but I guess for fifteen years, you know, when I take a look at Midland, I, I see the, the pains that they have, have gone through. I mean, they're not like Harrisburg. Harrisburg's fifty years old, they've been incorporated fifty years. Mount Pleasant's, what, a hundred plus? Kannaples Concord, they've been around a lot. Midland still, to me, are trying to figure out the direction they want to go. It would be hard for me to, to ever shut down a library. I don't care what part of the, the county it's in. I think they probably should have budgeted money to, to pay the rent, to pay the lease, and try to work out something with the county. But they did not do that, so, you know, we, you know, we say, I know we're going to build a library, I guess at Afton Village. We're gonna, we've got the groundbreaking for Mount Pleasant Thursday, which I know they, they bring a lot to the plate. And the thing that, that separates, you know, Midland and Mount Pleasant gets compared a lot, but there's, it's entirely different. Mount Pleasant is fortunate enough to have residents within the city limits, it's got businesses, restaurants, that are putting their money into the town to see prosperity. And that's, you know, a lot of it's because they've been around forever. Midland still, I think, you know, it sounds odd because they're, what, they was incorporated, I think, in 2000, which is twenty-three years ago, but they're still in kind of like a, a pattern of what, what are we going to do next? So me personally, I would, I would not vote to ever shut down a library and, and lay people off, or, you know. The way I look at the town, also in Midland, you know, you look at the, the town, the city is about, what, less than 5,000 people, but if you look at the, the part of Midland that claims Midland, you're talking about from the Corning Plan at the Union County Line. If you asked anybody on Flowstore Road, Park Slafferty, Jim Sossman, where you live, they're going to have a Concord address, but they're going to tell you they live in Midland. So this is, this is affecting, you know, 20,000 people, not just the, the city limits. And I know there's been issues with the city council in the past, I understand that, but that's not, the city council to me, to me, is, is not sufficient enough for me to, to hurt 20,000 residents. And that's all I've really got on that. Hopefully, we could come, I mean, maybe we could work something out, we could split, or some kind of compromise, but...
And I view it this, that's where I'm at.
Well, that, that's what I would say, is I think that a compromise would be good. You know, I, I tried to get this included in the budget back before we voted on the budget during some of our budget discussions, and it was not, it was not, ultimately, it was not included. And I, you know, as far as them planning for this, I know that they have tried to work with staff here at the county, letting them know that this was coming up, that this has been going on for a while, that there's thoughts of that. So they have tried. And, you know, as I said, and during our budget meetings, I, I am in support of us splitting this lease half. If they're, if they're paying from July to December, then we can pay January to June. You know, in Midland County Services, this is about the only county service that we have in Midland besides, I guess, EMS, or, you know, things that. We have the new library going in Mount Pleasant, we have the new library budgeted to go in Afton Village, and these are millions of dollars in facilities. So I can't imagine that we can't spend $20,000 to help the Midland Library. I, for one, as Commissioner Fur said, I, for one, feel that, you know, compromise would be, would be good for that.
Okay, the, you know, we, we have, we have had some, some conversation about this before, and I do have an opinion about it. You know, the, the question that most frequently comes back to me, and I hear this every single month, is how in the world do you sit up there and listen to the councilman from Midland come and trash you, as well as other commissioners as well, every single month, and not say a word about it? And of course, my answer back to them is, well, it's, it's our job to, to listen to what folks have to say. I think we're always better off if we take the high road. Sometimes you just have to turn the other cheek and, and continue on doing the things that you need to do for the sake of harmony. I am a human being. I hear every word that is said. I am aware of the fact that, that this councilman instituted an SBI investigation against me. I'm aware of the fact that, that, that he called the local television stations. Now, I'm, I'm talking about one councilman in Midland. I'm not talking about the entire board. I've not heard from the rest of the board if they condone those actions, but I do know that anytime somebody comes to this individual and, and tells them that they should not be coming making these comments, they come back, well, I've, I've heard him blame it on Commissioner Schu a number of times, that somebody's trying to prevent him from, from speaking his piece. And so, all that being said, is, another example of that is when, when, when Councilman Wise came and, and spoke during our public comment, and, and the timer goes off like it does for every speaker that comes before us, I think his response was, "I'll tell you where you can stick your timer," and continued on talking. And I, I have reviewed some of these recordings recently, and I let him continue to talk. And I had people come back to me and say, "Why, why did you not stop him the way that you would stop anybody else?" And my answer was, "Well, he was talking about me." And so for me to stop him in, in the middle of his comment, even though the timer had gone off, I, you know, to me, would appear to the public that I was trying to protect myself, which I didn't think that was the appropriate thing to do. And so the, the conclusion that I've come to is that this relentless, these relentless attacks, and these, these also come from, and from, from, from some staff members there as well, are designed exactly for that reason, to prevent, you know, I mean, one of the questions that, that he has asked is, "How can you be objective in making decisions about other municipalities?" Well, I think that same thing applies here. You know, can I be objective in making decisions about, about, issues in Midland just such as this while constantly undergoing these attacks? My answer is yes. You know, I, yes, I can. You know, I can, I feel like I am capable of making decisions about what is fair to everybody in the community. The town manager in Midland has, has come back with countless Freedom of Information requests against the county, very expensive information requests. You know who pays for those? The taxpayers, all the taxpayers of Cabarrus County pay for those. I do not know of another situation where a municipality in Cabarrus County has made a public information request against the county. If somebody from any of the other municipalities has a question, they pick up the phone, they call staff, they ask the question, and the question gets answered that quick, that simple. You know, I don't understand why they employ those kind of tactics. When we were having discussions about the, the sheriff's office contract to provide law enforcement in Midland, I asked some questions about, that I thought were specifically related to fairness, to, you know, are, are we treating every municipality equally? Are we being fair? I immediately got an email from, from the town manager of Midland saying that, that that was an inappropriate question, and the only reason that I was asking it is because I was not satisfied with the outcome of the last election, because they were extremely active in that election. On that same note, when we, we had complaints from them about the contract with the Sheriff's Department, I think the, and I, and I hate to quote the exact amounts, but there was an amount that they owed on their contract. We agreed to accept half of the original amount, you know, if, okay, well, if you're unhappy, we'll take half of it. They did not pay that. We made multiple requests, went down, met with the, I know we met, Commissioner Schu and I met with the mayor at least on two different occasions, and the answer that we received was, "Yes, yes, we will, we will pay the bill." They never paid the bill. And then they came back to us after we had already cut it in half, then they came back and, and, and said, "Well, we'll be willing to pay, I think, half of that." And, and those of you that were, well, I guess, that, that would be you, Commissioner Schu. When that came back to us, my response was, "You know, guys, you can vote however you want to, but as far as I'm concerned, just forget it. Write it off, we've wasted too much time, you know, it, it's not worth it. Just, just forget about it." And that's what we voted to do. We wrote that amount off, they never paid the bill. There is a general combative attitude regarding every single issue that, that comes up. We delayed the construction project at Rob Wallace Park in order to accommodate the town to have their, their fireworks displayed for the Fourth of July this past year. It's my understanding that when Commissioner Wortman went back down to, to their meeting as liaison afterwards, they were irate because there were rules in the park that they did not think they should follow. We have employees that work at the park, I think that, that were verbally abused by Midland staff members, and that's, that's an issue I think that has not been resolved yet. We had issues with Veterans Memorial, they, you know, I, I think most of y'all were involved in the conversation where they came back because $140 permit fee, I think that, for the electrical work that they didn't want to pay, the, they've, they've complained about the EMS, they have verbally attacked the county manager, saying that, that we give preferential treatment to Mount Pleasant because he lives there, and take units away from Midland. I, I mean, the list is, is extremely long. Most recently, I think Commissioner Schu has received numerous demanding emails because he made some comment about the, the property that had been donated to the town that they were originally going to build a library on, and, and my recollection was when, when they talked with us about that, and I've got some information on that as well, that there were some issues with the Corps of Engineers, that they couldn't get the permits they need, and that was one of the delays in building the town hall. But anyway, I think maybe Commissioner Schu mentioned that, and so now he's receiving threatening emails that, that he should retract his comments. I think I sent copies of the email response, there has been, it appears that maybe there has been a campaign with, with the supporters of the library in Midland, that they have said the county is wanting to shut down our library. My response to the emails that I've received is that is, that is very far from being My response to the emails that I've received is that is very far from being true. Not only have we not indicated, you know, suggested shutting down the library in Midland, we have increased the support for the library in our current budget this year, adding positions, adding, I think, 23 different, additional operating hours on a weekly basis. Currently, we're spending about $376,000 a year on salaries to operate that library, plus an additional $50,000 minimum in operating expenses. That takes our total contribution to about $426,000, and that's per year. They came to us, I've got the original newspaper article here, and you saw it in the email, but that was in 2013, and they indicated that they were going to build a town hall building, they were gonna include shell space for the library. The Friends of the Midland Library is tasked with fundraising for outfit costs projected $185,000. They came to the county and said, if we do this, will you operate a library there? And I think Commissioner Meesmer was on the board at that time, and we voted yes, and we put it in our budget to begin operation. I think it stayed in our budget for two years. The building never got built, so that didn't happen. I also included information about the other libraries in our system. All, every other library has been a partnership, a collaboration. There have been a lot of players involved, there have been Friends of the Library groups, there have been the Cannon Foundation, there has been the municipalities themselves, and you've all read this, but that began with the Concord Library, then when the Kannapolis Library came around, the Friends of the Library were involved, the commissioners were involved, I think David Murdock was involved, Cannon Mills was involved, the Cannon Foundation was involved, there were a lot of partners to make that happen. So, same thing in the town of Harrisburg. There was a very, and you've got all the information, but that has been the trend all along. And so, what, they came to us some years later and said, well, we haven't, since we haven't gotten our town hall built, would you be willing to, would you be willing to operate a library if we rented a building? Well, at the time, I did not think that that was a great idea. I mean, we haven't done that in other places, we haven't rented buildings to operate libraries, but probably for some of those same reasons that we've talked about, well, okay, we'll make an exception, we'll go along with it, and the board approved it. And so, they rented the building, we outfitted, I think we put the equipment in there, all the library, and have operated it ever since that time. So, for them to come back to us and say, well, we've changed our mind, we don't want to do that anymore, and then try to indicate that that's a decision by the county to close the library, to me, just, that does not seem honest and ethical. So, I mean, we had discussions as recently as I think our last regular meeting, or it could have been our work session, about the possibility of acquiring property to build a library to serve that area of the county. Now, that's not something that happens overnight, we've been talking about the, we have nothing on the entire western side of the county. Now, if you look at our tax base, I think the town of Midland represents about 2% of our total tax base. Now, Commissioner Fur is correct. When you say Midland, you're talking about a much bigger area than the town limits of Midland, just like when you say Mount Pleasant, you're talking about the whole eastern, just about the whole eastern side of the county. So, we're not talking about town limits, but if you took the, if you broke down the number of people in the tax base on the western side of the county, and talked about, you know, what kind of a return are they getting, or what kind of services are we providing there, that would be a stark contrast. And so, I think we've made good decisions, and I think we're moving in the right direction. And so, for one, for the town council to try to undermine those efforts, I don't think that's fair, I don't think that's right. And I don't, and I make a very clear distinction between the Midland Town Council and the people of Midland. That's two different things, and as we mentioned before, it encompasses a much larger area. So, I would support sharing whatever extent of information to them of the things that I've just said, but in other words, you know, they made a commitment to rent that property for us to operate a library in. We in turn made a commitment to fund the library and to operate it, which as I mentioned before, we're doing to the tune of $426,000 a year. We have given them opportunities, you know, the last economic development project that they failed to offer incentive on, we went ahead and did that, which is going to, I had the numbers here, that's gonna give them some significant tax base and income when that comes to be. Just the increase for what we've added to our budget this year is $161,000. That's the additional new positions that we funded for this year. So, for anybody to say that we are not supporting the operation of that library, I can't imagine how they could construe that. So, I would not be in favor of picking up that lease, and I would encourage them to follow through on their commitment and do what they've promised to do. Now, how we proceed on this, we can add this as a vote, or, you know, I'm certainly open to whatever you would like, how you'd like to proceed.
There's a couple of things I want to say. So, with all that being said, that you just went through, 75, 80% of it did not even pertain to the Midland Library, and I know there was a-
I think it pertains very directly to the ability to make objective decisions about that.
You went through your whole litany of lists-
Right.
-of what you don't like about Midland. So, with that being said, are we gonna tell the people of Midland that we're not willing to spend $20,000? There's a potential the Midland Library be shut down because we don't spend the $20,000. Whenever, you have to understand how they feel. You know, they, whenever we're gonna make the decision to go and build a new library in Mount Pleasant, new library at Afton Village, millions of dollars for each facility, and we can't pick up, we can't negotiate with town Midland just to pick up half the lease, this, that's the message that we're sending to Midland. So, you can understand some of their frustration. Like I said, you went through your litany of lists of what you don't like about Midland, there's a list on the other side of that as well. So, you know, there's items that they feel like they have been looked over, they feel as though they have been treated unfairly. So, we heard your side of it, I would love to hear what they have to say, and there's a long history here with all of that. But I think that if we don't go in the direction of splitting the lease, I think it sends them a message that they're being overlooked again, because here, like I said, we're building two new facilities in the county, and we're not gonna do this for them, so.
Yeah, I want to correct you on one thing. I haven't said anything about anything I don't like about Midland. I've talked about their behaviors.
I don't need to be corrected in what I've heard, because we sat here and we listened to you for about 20 minutes going through the staff of Midland, the council member from Midland, we can't control what he says. People come up before the board and criticize each one of us at our meetings, and it is what it is, we have to deal with that. But, you know, clearly, you had a lot to say about all that, so.
Okay, Commissioners, how would you like to proceed?
I think the projection I would like to make is, we're investing half a million dollars almost to run that library. I don't want to, don't quote me on the exact number, but when I was at their meeting, I did talk to town manager Parrish, and he said to get the $42,000 or $46,000, they would have to raise the town taxes by half a cent. They already have the lowest tax rate in Cabarrus County, and at this point, we're looking at asking 240,000 people to pick up the tab for that. He did ask for me to bring this up, and he needs guidance, is what he needs, to know if the town's gonna have to do it, or for us to do it. And I think, not as a vote, but just looking at it, it appears three to two that they're gonna have to pick up the tab. Is that pretty factual? And so, Doug asked for guidance, and so, I believe we've given it here. And I would like also to say that this made up blood feud that's been going on for however many years, we got in in, what, December? It's, I'm already tired of dealing with it. I don't know what needs to happen between the town and the county to come together. I know there's a long history, we've all heard all sides of it, but if this is what I have to look forward to for the next four years, that's pretty disappointing. So, at some point, it's gonna come to a head, and we just need to either all get together and figure it out, or see what can be done. So, but I think he's got his guidance at least.
Okay.
They're gonna have to fund it, so.
Very good. Well, then we move to item six, which is the approval of our regular meeting agenda. You all have a copy of that before you. I do not think that we have taken any steps that change anything that is in that agenda. So, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda as presented. Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. That motion passes. We do have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session, as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A34 and 5, for discussion of pending litigation, economic development, and acquisition of real property. Some of-
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second in discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We are now in closed session. Thank you all for joining us on live stream and Channel 22 tonight. See you in two weeks.